Welcome, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. Call the meeting to order at 6:31. And Wednesday, December 3rd. The meeting of the Montpelier Roxbury Board of Directors. And the first order of business is public comment. So this is a chance for the board to hear from members of the public on anything that's on the agenda for today or anything that's on their minds about how things are going in the schools. We'll start with anybody who's in the room who would like to make public comment. And seeing none, we'll go to online. Is there anyone who's got their hand raised? Can use the raise hand function, which should be at the bottom of your screen. Nope. See? Yeah. Okay. Great. And raising no hands?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, then let's move on to the next order of business, which is the consent agenda. A set of things that are fairly pro forma for the board to be accepting or approving. So we tend to do these all as one clump so that we can move through our meeting agenda efficiently. But of course, any board member can pull something off of the consent agenda for discussion if they'd like. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, Jill. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thanks, Casey. Any idea? Tim, did you have one, something you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, I guess I was, I was looking at the, um, the NASDAQ report on there. And I guess I was just curious if you or anyone on your team, Libby, had any observations about it? How it's, how it's, if you can remind us how it's used in formula? Is it like a building block for the budget?
Yeah, we're going to use some slides from budget. Yeah. Um, and we started working with NASDAQ last year. So it's still relatively new. And as they do more every year for us, their data will get more and more exact.
Okay.
Um, the reason why we tuned into NASDAQ is really for enrollment projections for the future. Um, Wash Central uses NASDAQ and has for years. And Stephen, my colleague over there, like literally is like, they've been off by like three. You know, like, so it's just a nice tool for us to look at for future projections, most definitely for enrollment.
And anything in there like jump out to you guys? Or I mean, it's, or you're gonna, we're gonna talk about later.
Some fascinating piece in there that I think I'm the only one who's really fascinated by. So maybe you can just make fascination.
All right.
Make me feel good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And before we started using them, we just had projections that were not quite as far out into the future and not quite as accurate. Is that right?
We had birth data and then basically we just rolled over year to year.
Right? So this is giving us like more accurate and long, longer picture, right?
Yes, most definitely.
Yeah. Which is nice for us to have.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other discussions? Okay. All those in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? And then I believe we're scrapping the student highlight from Main Street Middle School for tonight and moving it to another night. Um, and actually, before we get into the meat of the agenda, I wanted to add one minor agenda item at the end of the meeting, which is the Equity and Engagement Committee would like to remind the board about our different engagement activities and, and look for more signups. Um, so just a quick taking a look at what's a, what's going to be happening in the community over the next two weeks and asking for folks to join in on those conversations.
Mia, did you say that you were gonna come back to that at the end of this meeting?
Yes.
Perfect.
Great. Uh, all right. Well, then I think we'll get into the, um, budget implementation.
All right. Share this up. And just like I think past years, I believe this was part of the board packet. And as we get more information, we changed, we added more exact information. So it's not exactly as you all have it in your packet, but we'll make sure that the here one is up in the, in the community page when Nina gets it up. So here is our first draft.
You may sit in that seat. Yeah, we invite you to. Um, thanks, Mike.
For the community who have may not seen this gentleman's face before. This is Mike Concesi, who's our new, um, actually CFO, Chief Fire Angela Officer. Changed the title and we got a new business manager. And I will say off the top, so I don't forget. Um, Mike has done a bang up job at really being exact with our numbers that, you know, I've loved many aspects of every one of my business managers. He's the first business manager who's really like gone into calculators and used calculators with exactness. And because of that, we are not in as rough a shape as we thought we might be because he was able to get more exact numbers for this budget presentation for us. So Mike has done a really great job. Um, in a short amount of time, learning our budget pretty accurately. So thank you, Michael. Uh, so today we're going to talk about enrollment. We're going to talk about district drivers, the context for the budget, the numbers that we have right now and would love for the board to have a good presentation. And as per usual, my two experts on our board, feel free to jump in and tell us sure we got it wrong or any insight the two of you might have that you can share publicly at this time.
My kid's in that picture.
I think your kid's in a couple pictures, actually. Not a coincidence. We can play mana. Um, so let's talk about enrollment as Tim talked or asked about just a second ago. I'm just gonna get my picture off my screen there. Um, the NASDAQ piece is really interesting. So this is just our regular information that we have pre-K for 444 students. Grades five through eight is 360 and grades nine through 12 is 405 students currently. Um, our student demographics. And I'm not sure which one of my brilliant colleagues came up with the, um, statement with the star, but I do love the way that they phrased it. So I'm going to read it outside, out loud. Due to the size of our district, some student data cannot be reported in this summary to protect student privacy. District leadership monitors all student groups regardless of reporting thresholds. As each student, their identities and life experiences are what make our MRPS community strong. So I love that statement and I hope we remember to use it often. Um, so here's some enrollment information. And you may, I've added some things. Let me see if I can make this a little bigger. I can't. Um, so here's what, uh, when Mike and I were talking about this, these two next slides today. This is what's fascinating for me. And this is all from the NASDAQ report that I pulled. So in the year 2019, 2020, that is the year we closed mid, mid-year. We closed well, a little bit more. We closed in March, right? Per COVID. And, um, at that time of closure, we had about 1,000, we had 1,122 kids. The next year, if you all remember, we were online or in pods or having partial days here at the high school in a, in a funky schedule. Um, and we gained during that year 12 students. The next year, when we were masked for full day, we lost 31 students. My hunch would be most of them went to homeschooling during that time because they didn't want their child in a mask. But then the next year, and I put normal in quotes, you can't concede, but normal in quotes for that next year. Um, we gained 48 students. So not only did we get 31 students back, but we got more than that. Right? I just find this like now that we have these actuals from the COVID years in terms of enrollment, they're fascinating. Um, so really from the year 2019, 20 to now, our historical change, while there have obviously been fluxes, has changed from minus three students, which is a good thing. It, it means that we're relatively a stable community in terms of students.
And these are real people. It's not like the weighted stuff.
No, these are not weighted. Thank you, Tim, for that, that clarification. No, these are, these are kids in seats.
Okay.
Um, this next slide is also particularly fascinating for me. So this is where you can all ooh and ah, okay? What we did was we took the school year 2025, 26. And then I looked at the NASDAQ report for the Montpelier birth. The Roxbury is too small, so there, there's no reporting on Roxbury birth, but Montpelier births five years prior from that year. Okay? So 2025, 26, the year we're in right now, so 2020, 2021, these are our current kindergarteners, right? There's 62 births that, that year in 2020, 21. There are 62 kindergarteners. Yeah. And then the next year, there were also 62 births. So that's like our kindergarten numbers now. But then take a look at this. The year coming out of seclusion with COVID, right? This is the year we masked. We're going to have a kindergarten class of almost 80 kids, right? A significant jump in kids, more than we have had in quite a long time. That's 78 kids right there. Okay? And then the year following that, when nobody's masking, all that kind of stuff, we've come out of seclusion, pretty, pretty normal stuff. We have 46 births in Montpelier, just 46. I find this absolutely fascinating. There's your chance, Tim. Is this fascinating or not?
Yes.
Right?
Well, I wonder. I wonder why though, if the births stayed the same from the first year to the next year, we're, they are projecting we will lose 20 kids of enrollment.
Um, those are, those are, uh, I'm not sure. Well, this is just our kindergarten class, right? So you don't know the, the.
Graduating senior.
Who's graduate.
I see.
Kids are graduating.
I see.
All that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Okay.
Is the difference column supposed to be the row before minus the row after?
Can you say?
Yes, it is. The, the difference column is that K through 12 row, you're just subtracting from one row to the next.
Yeah.
Yeah. For K through 12 column.
I guess that, um, there's something with the 20, 26, 27 line. Guess it should be 1,000, uh, or 90, what is it? 1,118 minus 20, so 1,099?
That's what it is.
Oh, it was fixed.
Oh, oh, no.
It was a, there was a typo on the original line. I fixed it today.
Oh.
Sorry. Sorry.
You owe me that. You're rich me.
Sorry.
Ten owner.
I, I noticed that typo earlier today and I fixed it. So it is wrong on the one that you have, but on the one, I fixed it today.
So why, okay, then why if it's jumping with the kindergarten class is going to be so big? Why are we only picking up one?
Because again, it's for, that's the population of a whole district. The 1,100 is the population for the whole district. So a, a big class could be moving out, you know? It depends on how many kids are graduating as well.
Oh, so they similar, big class moving out.
Right.
Would we do it?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, uh, I just find that the birth rate in 2022 to 2023 and 2023 to 24, just absolutely amazing. And it, what we were talking about earlier in our leadership team meeting is that we'll have too many kindergarten teachers that year, assuming things stay the same. But we will need those kindergarten teachers then, you know, for the next year when we have.
This is why it's helpful to have this.
Yeah, exactly. So it's not just, you know, guessing and that kind of thing. Um, and that big bubble will go through the grades, right? Well, it will affect our class sizes pretty dramatically, especially with the next class following them. Something we just need to pay attention to.
Does anybody like track families moving into the district?
We don't. Nick, is there a way to, I don't know if there's a way to do that.
I mean, we can see transfer in status. Um, and that way, so we always track family coming in. Now, I don't have numbers of family, but we can do it by status yet.
I mean, like I, I hate anecdotal evidence, but I know dozens of families who moved into the district with small kids in the last five years.
That's what we like to hear.
Hmm. So I was just wondering how they get that? If, if it could be incorporated, maybe when they have a longer data set, they could.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's where they can get better, more accurate trending data. Right now, I think they're guessing a bit because it's only two years. And they said that when we joined on with them last year, they were like, the data will get better and better each year.
Is that like just a general model, like using the births five year prior for kindergarten class, like just assuming there's some churn in and out?
I believe so.
So it's like, that's like sort of their baseline and then from there?
I believe so. NASDAQ is a, is all New England. So a lot of school districts in New England use them.
Uh huh.
Um, and they do other things too. They could, they can do other things for you. But yeah, there, so they have, they must have some sort of modeling behind it. Okay, you appropriately were fascinated by that. Move on. Uh, so just a reminder, the school board focus, the academic achievement for all students, safety, inclusion and belonging for every member of our community and a commitment to open communication with our community. And the board has seen this multiple time. Our theory of growth with our four pillars, collective responsibility and collaborative practices, formalized essential learning, timely system to enrich, intervene and remediate and high quality instruction for every classroom. It's our theory that should we have these four pillars firing on all cylinders that will be building limitless features for our kids. Um, we started this chart for the board, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, where we've linked a lot of, um, where people can find more information on our four pillars and some of the work that we've been doing. When it's committed to, when it's connected to the budget, you're thinking about what's the professional learning? So we have Dr. Sarah Lupo and Dr. Kateri Thunder on here, um, along with Kate Pranis. So like you can see where some of the money is being spent. Letters training, of course, was a big expense, um, two years ago. And some of it is not. Some of it is more staffing and human resources, like our coaching and our, in our interventionists. Uh, but these are all places where people can get more information from our website around how these dollars are spent. So our context for the budget, here's our glossary of terms. I'm not going to go into these. We just, we have this on the budget presentation for anybody who just needs to put this in a different tab. So they have this up all the time because we use these words pretty, uh, Mike and I use these words. We're like rolling off our tongue and recognize that they are not very easily understood. So we try our best, but this is just as a cheat sheet for everybody. And again, another cheat sheet of where the public and the board can find more information about how Vermont currently funds education as it's very unique to other places. So the purpose of these budget presentations is to provide the board and the community with accurate information.
That child was very excited about budget.
Yeah. Yeah, they are.
What I think.
Provide board information to better understand and discuss our education spending with our community. Provide you all with information regarding what a level programmed budget might look like. And level program would mean little to no increase or decrease to programming for students and determine the direction for next steps in the budget development process. And that could include potential reduction amount, or I guess it could include potential, potential increase amount as well. Um, but that's the purpose of these budget presentations. This is the first budget presentation and there still are a lot of unknowns that we'll talk about in a second. Just a reminder of where we are. This is not the end all be all of what you're going to hear. You're going to hear this presentation at least three more times. Um, but that's where we are right now. So in between now and our next board meeting, we'll take the board's feedback and questions and we'll make some revisions through it. Um, we continue to talk to community and staff about needs and desires and we can put, roll all of that as we make each revision. The administration's recommended priorities, saw this two board meetings ago. We want to maintain resources for an effective MTSS model and SEL and academics. We want to allow for professional learning and equitable and inclusive classroom instruction. We want to sustain our safe and beautiful facilities. We want to ensure continuation of co-curricular activities. We also want to develop a budget that's fiscally responsible for our taxpayers and provide, protect the services dedicated to our most vulnerable children and families. Again, you've seen this slide before. Mike and I added one column to it today. Um, and I'll let Mike talk about that a little bit. We added the dollar yield column because we often know the dollar yield by this time, or at least we have the predicted dollar yield. We put the dollar yield on town meeting day, recognizing that the dollar yield isn't set in law until May or June. Um, however, when voters vote on the budget, they're voting on something on town meeting day, right? Recognizing that that could be different. So we put the money, the dollars from town meeting day. Mike, you're a go.
The one thing I would add is, uh, you can see in fiscal 24, the dollar yield was up at 15,479. If you may or may not remember, that was kind of the end of the ESAR funding cliff where the funds were coming in. And, um, after that, I think the decision was made to potentially release some reserves that allowed, um, allowed, you know, to help communities with their challenging education rising costs and all the things that we face today. So I think that was kind of a break between 24 and 25. And then we want the footnote 26 to say, um, that yield rate was adjusted for the statewide average. I think originally it came in the elevens and then we had to adjust it based on like a 72.36 statewide average, the same statewide average adjustment that the CLAs had to go through as well. Um, and so that's, that's just reflective there in 26.
The FY24 is interesting because that dollar yield was so high at 15,419 and our budget increased by 6%, but the tax rate was 1.2, a dollar or two. So that's, that tax rate was low because the dollar yield was so high. You have Mike.
The way Libby finds, I think, birthing dates and enrollment fascinating. I find this, this, this slide really fascinating. It's taught me a lot about the communities that I used to serve and the ones that I serve now, uh, which is how does, um, Montpelier Roxbury Public School fund its education? And you'll see this is broken into three groups, uh, the residents, non-residents, and then obviously the general ed fund. Um, what's fascinating here is 26%, about 26% of the residents are contributing towards, uh, education. The non-residents are contributing approximately 34 and the rest is coming from the general ed fund. I just find that fascinating.
Is non-residents essentially commercial?
It is commercial and second business, uh, second homeowners that don't have, right? They're not claiming that as their primary residence.
Got it.
And then can you explain to the board and community? I'm guessing if I had the question, then others might as well. What does that mean? Like what the general ed fund paying 40% of our education cost? What is that? How? What does that mean?
My understanding of the general ed fund is, that's a good question, obviously, is that, you know, the goal is that every student, every child receives the same education. Under, was it act 40, no, 46, act, um, can't remember the name.
Long time ago.
A long time ago.
Secretly in 68.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so they realize not all communities can raise what they need through property taxes, uh, to fund that education. So everyone gets a, a similar chance of a good education. So in this example, through residents and non-residents, Montpelier is unable to, to collect what it needs to fund its, its, its education based on that per cost per child, right? Penalty, not penalty, but the, the cost that the state is mandating we stay under, right? Before there's a penalty applied. So other communities are able to raise more than they need. They kick those funds up to the general ed fund pool along with other lottery, tobacco, alcohol tax, all that. Um, sales and use tax is also contributing towards that general ed fund. Um, so there's a lot of sources that feed that general ed fund pool. And all this is just showing is how does that breakdown happen within the 27.5 million that is needed, um, for ed spending needs? And, and just in ed, ed spending needs is obviously total expenses minus local revenues. So that net number is that number there you see for this year that we're in.
Scott. Yep. Thank you. Scott, did you have a question about this?
Yeah, I do have a question. Mike, I really appreciate this and I, I'm kind of curious. I, I suspect that we are a special case because so much of our tax base is not taxable, right? Cause we have so much state government property, right? In Montpelier. And so is that why there's such a high percentage of our education spending coming from the general ed fund and not from taxes?
You know, Scott's a good question. I, I don't know if I have all the answers as to the specific reasons of whether they have government buildings or, or businesses, or that's a great question. I'd have to dig further to give you a better answer.
Jake, do you have an idea about that or no? Not to put you on the spot.
Um, that breakdown is pretty typical. Um, if you think of a whole.
Districts across the state?
Yeah.
You mean?
I mean, it varies continually continually. But if you think of the whole head fund, it's made up of 25% home state taxes, 40% the non-home state tax and then all the other sources. So that would be the other 35% are sales tax and the things that Mike mentioned. So that is close to what our district is experiencing.
But he's right. Very few communities can fund 100% of their education through their own property taxes, residents or non-residents. The communities that I served before, I think it was only Peachum, uh, was able to do that. The rest of the communities, eight other towns that I served, look very similar to what Jake just said to this model right here.
Is this without respect to federal funds?
That is.
Federal's funds on top of this, the 27?
That 27 includes, um, that's local spend. So no, that's, that is net of everything. That's net of, of grant funds as well.
Okay.
Did you have any question?
Well, I was just thinking that there's a lot more, you know, there's not a lot of industry in Vermont, and if there is, it's in Chittit County. But if it's most, if the education fund is mostly funded through all three taxes, maybe that doesn't.
But it's not mostly.
Understand this.
But it's not mostly funded through property taxes. Property taxes are only about a quarter.
Here, right. But if I'm in Burlington, how much money is being collected? It's different. No.
Is it different?
Yeah. Just to make a clarification, you said only 20, that's 26% of the residents that, that claim their property to be their main residence. Non-residents, make no mistake about it, that is property. Could be residential property, could be commercial property.
Gotcha.
To be clear.
Apartments.
Yeah.
Renting property. Exactly. Yep. But it's still property. I look at that as property taxes. And I would say a significant portion of the general ed fund is still property taxes.
Got it.
I, I don't know the exact percentage, but it's, I mean, there are communities that raise a lot more than they need and they kick it up.
Oh, okay. Uh, Jim has his hand up. Just not on the screen.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was going to ask her, the point I was going to make. I mean, like, you know, the ed fund, obviously it's not just money that grows on trees or, or it's not good to us. So, um, you know, what, what does contribute to the ed fund? My understanding it is, you know, property tax, it's kind of a way to, it's mostly property taxes, but it's kind of a way to redistribute property taxes on top of what towns pay, you know, to make it even. And is it, is there any other source that funds it? Or is it, is it just kind of a, another fund that property taxes go into, for the redistribution purpose?
Good question, Jim. You know, this is a slide I can leverage from previous life over CCSU that actually kind of breaks down the general ed fund and what is it? What contribute towards it? It may not have the exact percentages, but it will at least give us a better picture so we can all understand better, including me.
Well, Jim, I'm not sure if you heard Jake kind of did the broad statewide breakdown. So sales and use tax goes in there and then a bunch of other like lottery and things like that go in there too.
Tobacco, lottery, all of it.
Oh yeah, perfect. Thank you. I, I heard some of it, the model.
I don't know at all.
You don't?
Okay. I find this next slide, uh, pretty fascinating as well. So within that 26% of the residents, how did the tax demographics break down between Montpelier and Roxbury? As you can see here, you know, it's broken into basically four income groupings. Home states with less than 47,000 pay approximately 2% of their income. So it's not, the, the, the home value is irrelevant. Between 47,000 and 90, uh, they're going to pay that income sensitive rate, which is the income yield that comes out divided by the, the town's CLA. And that's how that.
No CLA for that one. That's on the property.
Oh, sorry, uh, income yield divided by the cost per.
For people spending.
People spending. Sorry, thank you. Thank you for the correction. Yes. So, uh, right. And then the next grouping is that between the ninety and the one fifteen. And that's paying a combination of the income sensitive rate and the homestead tax rate. Um, and there are some home value exclusions, uh, or limits, maximum limits, and which we'll get to in, in the next few slides, but, uh, that's just showing what percentage of the people are in that. And then lastly, homestead income's greater than one fifteen, that should say, uh, point four, the, the new deck does say the point four. Cause the limit did change from last year from one fifteen to the one fifteen four hundred. Uh, and they pay that homestead tax rate that you're all very familiar with. Um, and I wanted to put a footnote at the bottom, thanks to the, by the way, first of all, thank you very much, Jay Philman, for helping me gather this information. And you've been helping me with this for the last four years, cause that's my previous duty over at CCSU, but there's an important footnote I, I'd like to make, you know, th- this is looking at the tax year filings of twenty twenty four. The budget you're about to be approving for the, for the community to be voted on will be comparing twenty six household income which we applied to the twenty eight tax bill. So we're all on a lag here, right? Um, and it's just important to understand that. And when we get to the next few slides, the purpose is not to provide exactness, just to be directionally correct to allow community members to personalize, well, what does this budget mean for me? That's all. So we'll, we'll get there in a, in a few. Uh, any questions on that slide? Sorry, before we jump.
So the, when, once we establish what the FY twenty seven budget is and people are looking at what that's going to mean for their taxes, whoever's making that calculation is using their twenty twenty six household income, not their twenty twenty seven household income.
Correct.
To be applied. I, I guess I don't understand the last part of that sentence.
The chip credit, the income based credit that people get, don't show up in the year when it's generated.
Okay.
So like, um, it, so FY twenty seven in Montpelier, Mike has people under forty seven thousand pay a flat two percent of their income.
Yep.
So.
But they're gonna see that on their twenty, FY twenty eight tax bill? Is that what you're saying?
Twenty eight bill is gonna have the.
Credit.
Credit earned it for FY twenty seven.
Got it.
And that, that stinks if you, and like you and your spouse are retiring.
Right.
For December thirty first.
Yep.
And you think, oh, sweet, like, our tax bill is about to go way down.
Right.
Right? But then come August, when you get your bill, it hasn't gone way down because it's based on the prior year income and prior year taxes, but prior year income, you were both, you and your spouse were both working. There's a lag. So like, you know, people say like, oh, well, some, some people don't have to worry about their educational taxes at all. That's kind of true for a small percentage, except for the lag. They will experience a big increase in the first year of the first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. All right. So this is my attempt at, at simplifying, um, residents or homestead values and their income and what it would mean to them based on potential budget we're putting in front of them. So at the very top row, you'll see, uh, two percent, two point five four, and then a dollar twenty seven. So the two percent is obviously very similar to what we talked about in the previous slide, which is the income bracket of less than forty seven thousand. That's why you can see that in the bracket where it's, uh, where income is thirty five thousand and forty seven thousand, it is a flat amount all the way down to the four hundred thousand dollar homestead value. Cause that's the limit before they would be, that demographic of residents would be impacted beyond the two percent. So as long as the home state value that they live in is less than four hundred thousand, if they're in that range, they're gonna play that seven hundred on thirty five thousand, or they're gonna pay the nine forty on the forty seven. Hopefully that's clear. Very similar to the next bracket, the sixty thousand dollar. I'm just using, you know, one example, sixty thousand and ninety thousand. Within those two brackets, they're gonna pay that income sensitive rate, which thanks to Jake correcting me, it is, um, you know, taking the income yield and dividing it by the per pupil spending. So that's why that's flat all the way to the bottom. But again, there are limits to the homestead value at four hundred thousand. Okay. So that's kind of the dark gray. Then the light gray, two buckets, is when the income is over ninety thousand, so ninety thousand and one dollar and less, and, and less than one fifteen. I just chose one ten. It's a random income number. So that is taking a hundred and ten thousand times the income sensitive rate, but it's capped at the two twenty five. So once you get over the ninety thousand, but under one fifteen, the homestead value cap is, stays at two twenty five. So you're still paying an income sensitive rate beyond that one, the one fifteen, that four hundred. So this slide does have it, which is good. Um, you'll see that, that income sensitivity is waived and you're paying the homestead rate of the dollar twenty seven in this particular example. So again, it's just, the, the whole purpose here, it's not to provide exactness, but if somebody understands about where their homestead income is and the value of their home, they'll be able to personalize the budget that we'll be putting in front of them to vote. That's it. And, and what this is saying is, you know, thirty six percent of Montpelier residents are paying either uh, the flat two percent or the income sensitive rate of two point five four. And again, I, I wanted to put a couple of caveats in here just to explain that we're not, this is not every example. Um, that, again, this is for, um, homestead declaration defines the homestead as your principal dwelling and up to two surrounding acres. Cause beyond that, um, you don't quite fall into that, this bucket that I'm trying to graphically show.
Yeah, your homestead is actually, um, and then, and I feel like a jerk. Really wanna talk about these things, but it's just all hopelessly complicated and it's painful and it needs to change. Uh, but anyway, your homestead is your entire parcel if you are a homestead. Um, house site is a house and surrounding two acres and that's the part that gets the sensitivity, the income sensitivity, you know. The tax department doesn't consider the rest of your acreage. That just gets the straight homestead rate. So like in Montpelier, parcels are generally less than two acres, but in Roxbury, they're probably bigger ones, so they're more commonly planned.
Thank you. I was shooting for directionally correct.
Fantastic.
Thank you. And this is just, the Roxbury is similar. Um, just trying to help people understand exactly the same thing on the previous slide. Uh, just so you guys are, are, maybe you already know this, so I apologize if I'm boring you, but the income sense, uh, income sensitive rate itself will always be the same for both communities, especially in a fully unified district. All right, it's, 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 it's the homestead tax rate that will differ because of the CLA.
Right.
Each town has its own CLA and have a different value. It, it would be coincidental if both towns have the same CLA. Okay. That's why I showed doll, I think doll twenty seven for Montpelier, a doll thirty four for Roxbury. Again, with the same caveats, that's it.
Hey, there's my kids.
There's Natalie Rock.
They're building sets for Legally Blonde, which is playing next weekend here at the hospital.
Friday night, Saturday afternoon, Saturday night.
That's right.
Get your tickets now before it sells out.
So we still have some unknowns with this budget. Uh, we had our first run with long-term weighted average daily membership, which is LTW ADM. Um, Mike and Nick are working very hard on that cause like other years, the LTW ADM was wrong the first run. Um, and Mike noticed it right away and Nick has been on it with our friends in Measure Ed. So our, having Nick in this position is like.
Huge.
Is wonderful, um, cause he can really spend some time on it and he has a really good relationship with Measure Ed who handles all of our data and handles data across the nation. Um, so we've already picked up fifty weighted students because of the work that's been being done. Um, the free reduce were, were really off. The other place that Nick is looking into is to see if our pre-K students who are considered English language students would be, would get the weight for the English language, which would be huge if they did. So, um, our friend Gemini says there's nothing in statute that would preclude, um, the pre-K kids to not get the two point four nine weight in addition to the pre-K weight. However, that's not our understanding of what the agency has been doing because pre-K students do not get tested with the WEDA exam, which is, um, the test that we use to determine eligibility. Um, but there's nothing in statute that says EL is determined by the WEDA. So we're, I have an email out to a couple colleagues who have more multilingual learners than we do to see what happens in other districts and if they know anything about it. And Nick is also working with the state on that.
Is, when, a minute or so ago, when you were talking about the weighted students, is the way that free and reduced lunch is calculated now, why you guys have to do that extra legwork? Like, is it hurting us? The way that it's calculated?
No, it's actually helping us the way the direct cert, I'm looking at Nick just to make sure I, I get ahead now.
Okay.
My understanding is that the direct cert helps us because it's not determined on whether
They file a paper.
File your paperwork. It's dependent on other, other ways to, to source that data.
Okay.
So, so for that number, at the end of the day, that's a number that we determine and certify to the state. It's not a number that the state gives to us or.
Come on up and talk about, you can say, right? Nick, come on up, cause you are more of an expert on this than I am.
And while Nick's getting settled, those are Career Center medical professional students who are gonna be our future nurses and doctors.
Sorry, Tim, can you ask your question again?
I was just trying, trying to understand how that number, the LTW ADM is ultimately set. Is it, is it a number that we determine and certify to the state, or is it a number that the state?
We determine the number of students that, like, like our student information system has total enrollment, right? And then you could speak better to this, but then all of certain student demographics cause certain weights that are written in statute, so.
And they're tagged.
Yeah. And so young people that are, um, considered like economically disadvantaged, hundred eighty five percent or lower um, of the poverty rate, those students have a weight of
We've got it.
Two, something.
No, not that high, but I can't remember the exact.
Yeah, it's a higher weight. And then young people that are English language learners, they, they have a rate of like a two point five, but if you're not an English language learner, depending on what grade you're in, you may have a weight of just one, for example. Um, and then pre-K is point five four. So we have all that in our student information system. We just have to make sure that what AOE is getting out of our system is accurate and that's what we're certifying. And then Mike does his magic with ADM.
It's no magic. So, so two-year average enrollment ADM. That's the basis of every and all long-term weighted average ADM. Two years. So the year, the year we're in, with, at October first, I think is a key date
Yep.
Of the kids in the seats. We understand it's very, you know, variable and it changes, it's fluid. But so that two-year average, the year we're in, in the prior year, then after that, based on, on the different demographics of the kid, of the child and students, that's when the waiting's kicking. Like the communities I came from, some of them had morality, some of them had small school, and those gave extra weights under act seventy three. I believe that, that was the change, like some of the waiting for them, some of it.
One twenty seven.
One twenty seven, sorry. Um, yeah, so we, we don't have morality and we don't have small schools. So we don't get those waitings, but we get the other winnings that Nick just referenced.
And so we, we have our information about the kid and then all the other factors that would go to the waiting. And that's what's in our system. And then we submit that to AOE and some, somewhere in between there, we, we or they decide what our number is.
We're constantly checking the data and, and if something looks off, we're, we're working with them to.
Yeah, and they, they will send us back, here's your data, like here's your number. And then we'll vet that number and say, something's off, cause what we have is lining up.
And.
And then you just keep going back and forth. It's really fun.
And that's exactly what happened. I, I almost like had a heart attack when, when the latest round was sent out. I think it was on November twenty first. And all of a sudden, the, the waiting drops by like seventy kids. And of the seventy, fifty had to do with the economically disadvantaged. And that was a seven cent impact on our tax rate. And I was like, I, I, I'm gonna have to look for a new job if this happens. I got nervous. So I said, Nick, please help. And he jumped right on it. He, he's been working with it ever since.
And so this process carries on. It's measured like as of October one, but this is gonna carry on throughout the budget season and past, or.
I would expect that we'll have a solid number at some point. Uh, we're getting closer and closer every day, but the other thing about Vermont is different, uh, districts will have different student information systems.
Right.
And so if you're using Infinite Campus or Alma or Power School like we have, the way that the systems are set up and the way the AOE collects the information, it's a new system and they're constantly trying to figure out all the bugs, uh, like, like right now, uh, pre-K multilingual learners, for example, are not being pulled in in the way that they should be. Um, because they were using something else to that, how that would be weighted. Um, so it's just a constant back and forth.
Okay.
With them on that.
When do you think that's like pretty firm?
It's taken five rounds in the past. It's taken five rounds in the past, but the difference being is in the past, when we didn't have somebody like Nick in the position to pay this much attention to it, it was our business manager who was like, that doesn't look right, right? It was, it was literally like a hunch, that doesn't look right. And Mike, Mike Barry, who was trying to do all the work with the curriculum and technology and the data, uh, would try to go in and do something, you know, yeah, I agree, it doesn't work, look right, right? So it would go back and forth for about five different times. And it's all dependent about other school districts too, like other school districts will be working this way as well. Um, this time, like Nick's got his eyes on the data so closely that he's like, yeah, I think, I think we got like twelve kids left that we gotta really figure out, like, where, he's that specific.
Right.
Um, so it might not be twelve, maybe putting words in your mouth, but you know.
My AOE sends next.
So, so we know the data, we know our side of the data so well now.
Right.
That, um, I think we'll get there sooner than we have in the past. Where we would put the, we, we're not even showing you the number right now because we don't know, we, we're still off.
Okay. All right, thanks. Let's hope.
I, I personally feel blessed to have Nick on the same team, cause I, I hadn't figured it out on my own in previous jobs. So this is outstanding.
Measure Ed is great. You're great.
Scott, what's your question?
Um, while we're on the budget unknowns and the tax factors, I'm, I'm curious if the, what's called the December first letter that came out, does that change any of the knowns versus unknowns? Or is everything that was in that sort of anticipated?
So when, yeah, Scott, Scott, when Evan sent out the board packet, uh, the dollar yield was one of the unknowns on your list, should probably be on your thing, but I took that off because we now know what the predicted dollar yield will be.
I mean, it could change.
That's the only thing that's changed from what you, you're looking at on your screen and what I'm showing the community. Um, so other things we, we're not sure of yet, the cent discount, Jake assures us we're gonna get something like that again this year from twenty, one twenty seven. We're just not sure how that's calculated just yet.
Yeah, it's not hard. Um, there's a footnote in the letter that explains how to do it.
Oh, good. We missed it. That's all right. We'll look at it.
What does it mean?
It's from one twenty seven for the, if you remember, we were one of the districts that the new weights hit hard. Remember that?
Yeah, yeah, that I remember.
Yeah, we got a cent discount. Um, and it was eleven cents and then ten cents and so.
Okay, so it's a level, it's like a leveling or gradual.
Yeah.
Yes, drop because we got it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, common level appraisal, my friend Jill says we'll have that by January first. And then we're not sure about the triple E grant yet or transportation aid. And our expenses that we're not, we are still unknowns are, we're in negotiations with the MREA, which is our teaching staff and the MRESSA, which are instructional assistants. So we're not sure what that contract negotiation will do. And the Career Center's six semester average, we'll, we'll get in a couple of weeks.
You know, although we don't have an exact number on transportation aid, I, I know, I understand how it's calculated. It's usually forty six cents of the prior year's transportation allowances costs. So that's how I modeled it for our revenue projections. It could be off a couple of thousand, but it's more than directionally correct for our purpose.
And there the, the federal grants that were in jeopardy, do you have any more clarity on those?
No, but we never have clarity on those at this point in time. Like, we don't get those numbers until June, May or June-ish.
From an inclusion standpoint, what, what we did not include, we did not include, we did not assume any title two or title four funding, only type of one.
And Medicaid.
And.
And the IDJI.
We did, we did assume IDA, we did assume limited Medicaid funds, yeah.
Go for it, Mike, question?
Okay. Um, so what we're putting in front of you here is, um, the expenditures needed for fiscal twenty seven. Um, it's up two point one three six million from the prior year or six point three six percent. We did not include the capital plan. We wanted the board to make that decision. Um, so we're leaving that at zero. Um, so, so the net, uh, the non-tax revenue totals are five point nine, up almost a million dollars. I think is what Libby had alluded to earlier, that we're, we're getting more exact in how revenues come in. Like the transportation aid is up significantly. Um, extraordinary income for special education is up significantly. And that's where we're starting it. So the net impact of ed spending needs as of right now is eight seventy. If we were to add the two seventy in that capital plan back, obviously that number would go up to slightly over one point one million. Um, we don't know the, the exact number of LTW ADM. We believe it's gonna be in the mid eighteen hundred, so eighteen fifty-ish, maybe even better. Nick can work his magic. And so that's why we can't give you an, uh, ed spending per L T W A D M as, as at this moment. But we do know the property early indication, the property yield rate will be eighty-eight forty-nine, which really is wonderful. Um, and so once we have what we are missing, we'll be able to provide you a, um, a, a pre-C L A tax rate.
You know, what's not on the chart that I just realized is that sent discount too.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just make sure that we did that.
The number I'm using is probably wrong, so I'm glad it's not actually.
So what, what do we care about more? Um, the total budget number or the education spending just from a, like, can, can someone explain those? Like how I should think about those two?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. I, I'd say the, what matters for the voters really is, is more on the ed spending because that's what's affecting the tax rate. That's, that's not to say that, you know, we can be irresponsible of what we're spending.
Right.
It's just that is what's actually impacting all of us.
Is that the number that's on the warning though?
No, that's, that's, Mia, that's a great point. So the way the, the warning has changed, you can now say what the total expenditures are.
Right, and then it would be the six point six.
Correct.
Increase of six point six over the previous year. That's how the warning is called it.
Correct. They won't, they won't.
Not as nice as seeing a three point one four increase over the last.
To your point, we're not able to, to get credit for the fact that we found an, an extra million, not an extra, but by refining both the expenditure side and the revenue side.
Right.
We're getting to a better result.
Right.
Which is a more accurate indication to your community. But you're right, we, it will look like six, yeah, that's, that stinks.
On the warning on the budget line, I don't think it says this is an increase of six point six percent over the prior year.
I don't get it.
Oh, it's the per.
It's a dollar amount.
It's the, for people's full spend, the, the per L T W A D M percentage. But the total spend number does need to be listed. She, she is right there. I think the percentage.
Oh.
But it might be on the student, per student.
So we don't know that yet, which, but that is good news because that is
Could be right.
Based on education spending, so that number, but it's also based on enrollment, which it sounds like even after the refining that Nick and you and the A O E are doing is going to be lower than what it was from last year. Okay.
So.
I'm following you.
And, but leaving the sort of political side, you know, of like what's on the warning, putting that to the side, in terms of how we're trying to be responsible stewards of, you know, funds and whatnot. Like is the, the education spending would seem to be the number that we should really focus on it. Is that correct? Like I'm, I'm, this is a question. I'm kind of struggling with.
From a communication standpoint to your constituents that you're representing and the communities and people, yes, I would say absolutely, yes. But what's got to be on the warning?
Yeah.
We have to, by statute, put, put the total spend.
Budget. Jill's looking it up right now. Um, I realize Scott has his hand up, but I, I hear what you're saying, Tim, about the, you know, what's on the warning politics aside. But I wouldn't want to go to our community and say, please approve a twenty-eight point six million dollar budget. When in fact, what they're gonna see on the warning is thirty-four point five.
Yeah, no, I, I get all that. I just, I'm just trying to think for myself on how, like, on trying to get to what's important.
Um, right.
In, in managing costs and providing.
Sure.
You know, top level education, like where, where should we be focusing? And then we can from like that substantive base that work on how we communicate out, you know?
Okay. All right.
Fair point, all around.
We've got Scott with his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I, I have a, a question and then a comment to add to this, the conversation about the budget versus ed, ed spending, right? So really quickly, like, if we are like amazing and start recruiting students from all over the country to come, our general budget's gonna go up, but so is our, our revenue, right? And so ultimately, there may be no impact to the taxpayers. But if we add a hundred students from around the world, right, but our general budget's gonna go up, right? So what I think Tim is saying, and I agree with is ultimately, what's the number that is impacting tax rates? And if I understand Mike correctly, it's the three point one four percent increase in ed spending? Is that, is that correct?
It, it is. And so, and so maybe the full story of how to present this to the community is you're transparent about it all. Yes, we're up six point six percent or two point one million. However, our revenues are up about a million. And so when you net the two, the, the need tax purposes is the twenty-eight point six. So therefore, we're only up three point one four percent. I mean, just be transparent, right?
Well, that's why all this is on the slide, which I appreciate.
Right.
So then, that really quickly brings up my, my other question. My, my child had a very, very important um, question for me that could not wait, and I think I missed this, but why did the non-tax revenues go up by twenty percent? Um, uh, because that's, yeah, that seems significant. And, and, and yet I missed it.
Sure, there's three major drivers. I, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I could pull it up, um, later, maybe the next presentation. But, uh, the lion's share of that million is extraordinary income. Because I'm, I'm using a real calculator for the students that have, um, high needs. Uh, and so that is helping, uh, in the past, I think it was more of a, um, level loaded revenue number. And so I, I'm using a calculator the A O E provides, and that's getting to a more exact number. So that's up significantly. Transportation aid, no different. That was kind of just level loaded every year. And I, I understand the way that reimbursement model works, and I'm just using a more accurate number. And the last piece is, um, more interest income. So, um, we, I work, when we work with Community National Bank for that TAN that you all approved to provide, uh, working capital to us before the tax money comes in. Um, being smart about when money comes in, not putting it into a next to nothing interest rate checking account or main operating account. We're putting the money in a, a TAN which is yielding approximately four percent. So, um, that's helping and, and we're gonna earn two to three times as much as that TAN will cost us in interest expense, we're gonna generate on the income side. So just good money management. So that, those are the three big, um, drivers of the, of the revenue number being up, Scott. I hope that's helpful.
Absolutely. Thanks, man.
The thing to be aware of that we've been talking as a leadership team is Mike use, Mike is using more exact numbers to get bigger revenues this year. Um, and it's a one-time yep thing, right? Yeah, we're not, he's not gonna find that same revenue amount next year.
Nope.
Find isn't the right word. He's not gonna be more, he can't be more exact next year.
Nope.
So it will be.
No, but, but, but again, some of that's also on the expense side too, right? Like trying to get more accurate, so I can look all of you in the eyes and tell you, this is what it really does cost. And this is what the revenue offsets are gonna be, so we know what the ed spending net amounts. So it, it, this one time, that's true, but I think this is kind of a one time for, on both sides of the equation to get more accurate. So when we go forward, we'll know what, what real increases will be.
So if I hear you correctly, the, the increase is one time, right? That, but, but, but then it will be, it's not like we're gonna see a big decrease in future years. It's just gonna maintain. We're not gonna see it in the same level increase, uh, over year, year of a year.
I think Libby referenced, we're not gonna see another million dollar increase in the next year. It will be more level loaded, right? Correctly level loaded. So the variables that drive them don't change. I'll have to caveat that. If all of a sudden things were to change on, you know, in the special education world, or, or if we, if we stopped or changed the way we provide transportation costs, that will obviously drive the revenue.
All right, are we still fascinated? Great, let's keep going.
I think this is fascinating. I think this is really helpful. I, I appreciate the level of detail.
You're still on, sir.
Uh, this next slide.
There are a lot of slides I have to talk through, Libby.
Um, all right, so this slide is just trying to, um, obviously break out in a pie graph. You know, what, what are the expenditures by the major programs? Um, you know, general education versus special education, uh, versus, uh, co-curriculars all, all the way across. You could see that, you know, huge chunk of it is general ed and, and special ed, and the rest break up into those different categories. But it's just a, a way to look at total spend and, and what areas we're spending in. Again, this is, uh, by, by program, which I believe is the, the non-pie graph example is looking at uh, just in total, year over year, um, and also comparing it to twenty-five actuals by program.
Wait, I have a question on this one.
Yep.
When I was looking at the numbers, just lost the, um, the principals line um, has a tw- almost twelve percent increase over last year? And some of the, the comments or the reasoning for it, you had the seven percent increase in health insurance premiums, but how does that seven percent go to twelve percent?
That's not enough comments, so I need to.
Okay.
Finish that out. That's, that's not all healthcare premium I can tell you for sure. So I'll take that as a takeaway.
As Mike's writing that note to himself, here are the expenditures by category is just a little broader than before. We just tend to show the board in a few different ways how our expenditures are broken up.
Yeah, ca- category is also known as like an object code. So salaries, benefits, purchase services, dues and fees.
This is where you can truly see that salaries and benefits create, makes seventy-five percent of our budget.
That's right. Going to people business.
Yeah.
Similar, just non-pie graph, just showing it, uh, by bucket over the actuals of twenty-five, twenty-six budget and twenty-seven proposal.
I, I'm glad that these made it in because I, I'm sort of on this dog with a bone lately about the cost of health insurance and the impact that has, right? We like, you know, we hear about like school spending, school spending. And it makes it sound as though it's that school districts are spending more money. But in fact, health insurance alone is like a significant, it's twenty-three percent of our budget, if I read that correctly. And is going up every year.
Well, we'll get to F Y twenty-five actuals to the F Y twenty-seven proposed on that category side. It's a million dollars more in a, in a two-year period of time.
Right.
And it is, it's more than just health insurance, but it is, health insurance obviously is a significant portion of that twenty-three percent.
That's true. There's other benefits in there.
When I first got into education finance in twenty nineteen, family plan was under twenty thousand, it's like nineteen and change. Now the family plan alone is over forty thousand. So in six years of stuff.
Which wasn't mentioned in the dollar yield letter.
Is that a regional thing or a nationwide thing?
That's a great question. I don't know.
I think it's nationwide. We experience it in, uh, in the work I do with the state pension systems. Uh, we have actuaries that consult for systems across the country, and they're telling us that, like, the national trend that they're using to project future, uh, increases is just, used to be something they change every couple of years. Um, now they're revisiting it multiple times in a year because it's going up so quickly. So while we have, you know, it's certainly hitting in the state very hard, what they're telling us is that it's a very national offense.
Does Vermont have highest premiums in the country?
It may.
It may, but the percent of increases, I think, is being like the, directionally. It may not start from the same baseline, but it's moving in the same direction, I think, all across the country.
I think I heard that on B P R too.
Yeah, we have, um, here, my wife does self-care policy, so I know.
We have a fun household there, Jay.
Dirty, but we have, um, we've not had, she, according, she helped me pure community rating, is that right, Tim? Which is.
I don't know that.
When you, when you get a, uh, swimming, they don't charge you extra if you're old or if you smoke or anything like that. It's the same for everybody. It's kind of socialized, but if
Oh, I see.
Population that is rapidly aging, then, you know, that can bite you.
This next slide is ju- it's not all expenditures, it's just the salary portion of that pie graph made into a different pie graph. So you can see where, how that salary is broken down. So seventy-five percent of our salary is broken into student-facing positions and instructional systems. Were people who are on the teacher's cap, teacher's, um, contract. And I say it just that way because people who are on this teacher's contract are not just classroom teachers, but also our social workers and our nurses. So I just want to make sure that it's, we're not just imagining a person in front of a class of kids.
Uh, so this next slide is, uh, obviously the revenue that we're projecting in twenty-seven. Uh, with the bulk of it obviously coming from ed spending, um, thirteen percent of state grants. Federal grants only makes up three percent and one percent is local other. And even it didn't fall on the other three, fell on the other. So it's one percent small potatoes. This capital plan, after working with obviously Tom Allen and Libby, you know, I'm just trying to show obviously some of the decisions that were made at the end of the fiscal twenty-five year, which was that, that allocation, uh, from unrestricted to the capital plan. And, you know, these are, this whole projection is another premise, obviously, that, that we're moving forward with, you know, some portion of, uh, the, the U E S windows. Uh, mainstream middle school bottom floor egress windows and the mainstream middle school playground. So that's what that green column is representing. Uh, and then obviously twenty-seven and twenty-eight just continues to assume, we're gonna continue to put the annual capital fund request of two seventy in, which obviously is at your discretion.
Well, you do have it in here on this slide, but you don't have it in.
Correct.
Okay.
So this is kind of like wishful thinking. I'm hoping that triggers the decision to, to make.
You're no pressure, it's just.
No pressure.
Tell people how to vote, you just tell them to vote.
That's right.
I'm not the board.
This is what it would look like.
Decision around that two hundred and seventy thousand that has been traditionally put in from a budget, right, perspective. And then you were, you, it says at the bottom here, M S M S playground under F Y twenty-six, but you don't have it under F Y twenty.
Correct, actually in twenty-seven, so that's, that's a mistake. I had to move it once I realized we didn't have enough. Uh, it, it, I think it needs to go over to the following year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Really quickly.
Go ahead, Scott, sorry.
Yeah, I just, um, I had the same question that Mia just, or the, I, I had the same observation that Mia just pointed out, right? That the two seventy is here, but it, it wasn't in that previous slide. And, and I'm curious. I mean, I would imagine it's a, it's a minor, um, difference if you put that two hundred and seventy in, um, that table.
Well, I think it comes down to timing too. When I talked to Tom, he, he made it sound like we would not be able to get it done during the school year that we.
You're talking about mainstream middle school playground.
Yes.
Yeah, he's, he's talking about the two seventy.
Oh, the two seventy for the budget, sorry. Yeah. Uh, sorry, Scott, did I answer the question? It sounded like I need to answer it.
Either you answered it or I was confused or both, but I, um, so yeah, in that, the table in which it didn't, it didn't appear. I just wonder, i- in the overall, um, total budget, it has very little impact on the, on the, um, ed spending in the end.
Is it about a cent?
But be about a penny, little over a penny. One point one, one point two. Because for every two hundred and thirty-ish thousand that we spend, it moves your tax rate about a cent.
Okay. And then finally, the fund balance. This is where we're at, for fund balance.
Correct. And then at the bottom, you'll see, um, obviously some variations of whether the board wants to have either that two percent or that four percent cushion, if you will, or reserve set aside. And then I'm just trying to depict what would the value be above that for, for future allocation purposes. Whether it's the capital fund, whether it's to buy down the tax rate or whatever you guys were thinking.
So the board can make, you don't have to make these decisions in budget time. You can, but it's just for nation.
I have a question. You're suggesting that there are financial mechanisms, tools, products that give us a return, right? When you're talking about this TAN thing that you were saying, if we have a set aside, like say for the Net Zero Study, is that going into an account that's not earning whatever your financial product is capable of giving us back?
No, the general funds as a whole are, are done that way. So when we have the ability to move funds, it, this is hard money. This is not like.
How you're labeling it.
It's just how you're labeling it. It's not in it. Right. It's a pool of funds that ebbs and flows.
Yeah.
And so I'm just trying to leverage when big pockets of cash come in, timing of cash versus the timing of the spend. I'm just trying to be wise with that working capital.
So what we name it here is not affecting your ability to do magical things that might be able to.
generate interest.
Yeah.
I'm trying to earn as much as.
Is it a question wrap? Is it a question wrap? Um, okay, so. Questions for the board's discussion, um, what are the board's goals regarding the tax implications of our budget? And what information do we need to provide for you in the next budget round? Essentially, what can we do to help you make decisions?
Um, just through, just been talking about the capital uh plan, I would love to see the um. Our planned contributions going in. As we've kind of had the policy in existence and. Like the next iteration, I'd I'd like to see it with if others are amenable with it in. So that we can kind of see the, I think that will give us a whole picture and I I think it's always really important to maintain that funding discipline. So once it goes, it's hard to get back to, you know, that next year when we're supposed to contribute three hundred thousand according to the schedule, it's kind of hard to get back. To that place. So from my end, that. Something I'd like to see, that's if folks would agree with that.
I think it would be helpful to see it at least, yeah. Any other requests?
I think we can um flesh out more of that table, um, the.
Slide twenty-five, budgeted plans?
The one that goes up down the boy's tax rates with the. Budget total, budget on top, yeah, that one.
That one, yes.
Um, the the petty is. You can calculate depending incentive in the CLAs, um, we did like some preliminary CLAs.
Sure.
That you can plug in, they're not final, it won't be final until the end of the year, but it's available. And it usually pretty close. So you use all that and. Particularly just down to actual tax rates.
Yeah.
You're smart on Jake, in fact, I, Libby and I, I had the liberty of actually, what what would happen if if we got a certain CLA? So I can tell you right now that with the budget that we have, you know, we're looking a range. Based on how, you know, the final LTW ADM comes in, what the preliminary CLA could look like. You know, anyways, from a penny increase to as many, maybe as high as six cent increase. Uh, right now, we from a last, and we can definitely show that at the next presentation, if the information is not available for us. We can, we can start to make some preliminary views of what we're looking at.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, when you say level programming, this number here, thirty-four thousand five hundred one dollar, five hundred one. Thirty-four million, five hundred one thousand two hundred three dollars doesn't include any increases or decreases in. Anything?
Right.
It.
That will accept.
It increases in salary.
Human resources.
Assumed increases in salary and assumed and and known increase in health insurance costs. But nothing in like, that would be student-facing or programming, okay? So. I would be interested to see then, as Jake was saying. At the next presentation, how that all translates to the actual tax rate with those new things plugged in. And um, even if it's not our final LTW ADM, just what you know two weeks from now.
True.
So that we have closer to real numbers, and then that will help us know. Whatever the tax increase is, I think then myself as a board member would be able to say. Does that feel like it's on target? Or do we now need to give you direction to, Libby, you gotta find some more money? You know, right now, we can't tell you that because no, we don't have an impact, but. I would like to be able to, in two weeks, for the board to give you direction, either, this looks great. Or we will need you to find some savings.
Yep.
You go ahead.
I ask you a question, like, so if someone comes to me after this board meeting and says. Tim, education spending is up three percent, but we just saw on the news, the tax rates are going up twelve percent. How, like, how do I answer that? Like.
How does he answer it, Jake?
What 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 do I say is going on here?
Your question is, uh, if our district's education spending is going up three percent.
Yeah, are we, like, is the idea that we're just lower than the statewide average that are? That we're on the lower end of things or?
Three percent would be low, um, but a letter that generated that twelve percent, we. Uh, like, supposed to be like high fives, so that would be like half as much. So, yeah, I mean, so you you, if somebody said that to you, you could say. Well, that statewide average may be higher, but our education spending is not going up as much as other districts. So we're thinking our tax rate is not gonna go up as much.
Okay, and then the other half of that, like you said, it was about fives for the average, and the other half of that was just the buy down, right? That is what be assumed to not be in place.
Yeah, yeah, the buy down has a big effect, um, is a hundred and eighteen million dollars.
Yeah.
So it's like five percent worth of effect, ish, or maybe high fours, um. Yeah, the thing about the buy down is that um. People don't really realize that like forty-one million of it was coming from the ad fund anyway. So it's a sort of unusually high um bottom line that was available in the ad fund. Um, but that every year, they always plow it back into tax rate, so it's like not like a big story, you know? The big story is the mini general fund transfer of seventy-seven, which is a little unusual. Um, but yeah, it's 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 a big effect um, to pump in that much, one-time money.
But, okay, so but directionally, it was fair to say that from what we're seeing as of today. Our spending is looking like it's coming in lower than the statewide average that's driving. You know, that letter to to a large degree.
I think that's one of the trickiest challenges that we have as superintendents, business managers and board members is. That there's a, there's now a media story, right? It's all over my Facebook feed as a personal citizen around, you know, taxes are increasing by forty percent across three, you know? All the numbers that were in that letter.
Right.
And you're right, we need to have our elevator pitch down to say, yeah, that might be what was in the average predicted statewide spending. And if I'm Pili Roxbury, it's not the average.
Right, because this is an inflation budget, as I'm seeing it at this point, we're going up with inflation.
And like a couple of weeks ago, Libby, it seemed like things were looking much rougher.
It's because of the revenue that he found, or the the more exact revenue numbers and the reasons why it's not as. Terrible as what we thought was gonna happen, because Mike hadn't done that math yet. With, and what, what I've learned and from from Mike is that um, in previous years, we just rolled over the same number each year. And that could be why our fund balance grew considerably, quite honestly. Because we were rolling, we weren't.
Predicting less.
Exactly.
Less revenue.
Right, that we weren't doing the the work in like extraordinary costs for special education. Like that was way off on what our previous budget presentations were, which I didn't realize. So um, but when Mike did the actual calculation of what we're actually getting and put that in. That's what come back, like that million dollars in revenue that wasn't in previous budgets are what are combating below dollar yield for us right now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Like when he told me that, I like jumped for joy, I was like, you gotta be kidding me. This is great, but we didn't know that, we didn't know that two board meetings ago.
Hey, could I test like a fringe theory with you?
Oh, that was fascinating.
Should I get my laptop open?
No, but you might not be able to answer it right now, but like. My theory, my question is. Could we wait? To, until after the yield bill is passed to. Set our education spending. Like, say, like suppose we have some fund balance available. Could it be a flexible lever? Suppose we had announced to the community that we're gonna get your tax rates increase to be exactly four percent. Could we you, could we wait till the yield bills pass and then? Set our education spending potentially to do that.
I, I think whatever we put in front of the the voters, obviously, is something we're gonna, we're gonna target. But once the yield rate does get finalized, to your point, that provides flexibility if we have a fund balance. So we could potentially, if the board could vote. Um, especially as as revenues are coming in as well, assuming maybe there's more revenue that I hadn't. Been able to find that were to come in to offset it, the spend, I think that's the whole purpose of a fund balance is. Is to have flexibility as long as it's been approved. Right, by the board, directionally speaking, so if there's, if there's a mission you all have. Or a project or a special circumstance. I came from districts who didn't have a fund balance, so this is really good news, you have one and can use it for purposes of need. So I think, to answer your question, I I think you you probably could, as long as you voted on it, especially if it wasn't part of the original budget. And and more like a reserved restricted fund purpose, maybe not unrestricted purpose. So taking a unrestricted surplus, which you currently have, moving it to a specific purpose. And that's where I think you have that flexibility, I think.
The reason I'm fascinated by that is because like last year, you know, we did all this stuff and we told the community like we thought. Tax bill during the five-point whatever percent, I have no idea what it was. And then the legislature swooped in and pumped all this money in and and act, and and the. The community approved the budget based on five-point whatever, right? And then the legislature swooped in and said, hey, don't worry about it, and they made it one percent or whatever it was, so. Like. In 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 that case, like. So if they're gonna do that, like, well, why can't we wait till they do their business? And then get our taxes to be what we have indicated they would be.
I'd I'd be hesitant to make any modifications to a budget that's gonna vote about, that's.
Yeah, you vote on the budget, and then all internal mechanisms is like, I'm I'm just wondering how far along can we manipulate things? Like, is there, is there a point where the law says you need to lock in everything you've you've said about whatever?
Oh, there is a statute that talks about this, where it, what, it's 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 the opposite though, it's in in a negative. Environment where the community were to vote it down, you get ninety percent of the previous year's budget. To work with.
Right, until you can pass a budget.
So I guess if you want to sabotage potentially the vote and extend, don't extend, it extends.
I think just a little bit, sabotage might not be the right word, we would.
Sort of saying, it's that it delayed the vote out further, make our, I see from a community, Calcoa, who didn't have their vote until May. If you wanted to push out the.
I don't think.
I'm just trying to get creative, that's all.
I think you're talking about the difference between voting on a tax rate versus a budget, I think we vote on a budget. And you're talking about like, kind of reacting to another decision to to affect the tax rate, but I.
Yeah.
I think we would have to change our budget.
No, because the total budget number would be the same, but we would pump in offsetting revenue or pull it out to. Toggle education spending to get per people spending to be exactly what we want to be.
I understand what you're saying, I don't see why we couldn't, why the board, not wait, the board couldn't do that with a vote. The only thing I would say is that you're doing that pretty late in the game in the fiscal year. Because of when they vote the dollar yield, this, if I'm understanding you correctly, when they vote, like, they could, they may not vote, especially. Can you imagine this legislative sessions, they may not be voting that dollar yield bill until the end, you know, very end of June. So the board would need to reconvene to to approve the amount either taken out or put in. Right at the end of the fiscal year, which might put this man in his office over a cliff, because that's a very busy time for. The closeout of a year, right, it would be adding a new and new piece of the, and I'd say it's possible and. You're pushing up against time because you're relying on the legislature making a decision in May-ish, which we know, like last year didn't happen. Hold on, I do, Scott has his hand up, which I think means he wants to get in on this.
So I'm not ready to go as fringe as as Jake, um, but but I do think. I I think I see some value in the in the in the the concept that you're bringing up, Jake, because. We do have a decision, right, to make about the unanticipated reserve in our, sorry. On, yeah, the the reserves in our fund balance, right? Like we, that, I'm I'm flipping back and forth because I would just want to make sure I have the numbers, right? So Mike has laid out like if we have two percent or four percent, um, right? And so that decision, right, it seems to me it makes sense to have that conversation at the. Like when, what what Jake was saying, not the overall budget, but but merely that conversation about about the the.
Oh, you just muted yourself. Or someone to you, I don't know.
It was me, I I'm telling myself I'm rambling, so I'm gonna just mute myself, but does that make any sense? Like, the logic that Jake was using helps me understand when the timing for our decisions around what to do with the rest of the money in that. In that fund balance.
We really need to do those discussions, we get creative.
Yeah.
One thing I could offer is I, sorry, I forgot to schedule a finance committee meeting this Friday, but we could take this up in that committee meeting. If you wanna, an operations committee meeting, if you guys, Scott and Jake, both being in it, if you want to take that issue further and chew on it for a while.
I think it would be smart to have an operations committee before the next budget meeting, because we can talk about that two seventy, we can talk about the the.
Yeah.
The reserve fund, we can talk about lots of different bits.
Yeah, I'll reach out with scheduling.
Okay, let's get back to the questions that Libby posed at the end of the slideshow, what are? Do we, what is the board's goal regarding the tax implications of our budget? And I think that's okay if we don't actually have an answer for that right now, but it's a good thought-provoking question. And this other one, though, I would like to hear from board members if they have requests for information. That they would like to see next time around to help us make decisions, because we don't have to decide, as you know. At the next but meeting, but we will be getting closer than needing to make a decision.
I'm thinking about the prospect of spending some of our capital fund. And I know that that's somewhat separate from the budget process, but when we talk about spending money, people get anxious. When we talk about spending, even when we're doing something as productive and wholesome and necessary as fixing windows. Spending large amounts of money makes people anxious. And so I don't know if this is something that needs to go in here or if there's a way to say. This is how we got to where we are with our capital fund, these are the things that we almost did and didn't do or whatever. And this is how long we've been deliberating on making decisions about spending some of this money, which isn't, which is specifically for this purpose. Just because.
Investing in our infrastructure.
Yes, just because people get anxious when there's large amounts of money being spent and they get confused, and I just wanted to be really clear. Where it's coming from, how we've been adding to that some uh over the years and and sort of being very deliberate about how we use that money. And I know it's somewhat separate from this, but it's part of the budget, it's part of people's understanding of taxes. Is school spending and that includes infrastructure, because it's not all as clearly separate, I think, in the public eye as it is. For us that have been with it more closely.
So is there something in particular you'd like to see in the next budget presentation?
Maybe just a breakout of um. You know, just a little bit more on that thirty-two capital plan.
Slide.
And the decision that we made to slide money from the general fund. It's sort of like that timeline and and kind of how we came to that choice. Um, and I'm not sure if I'm making any sense also.
The the slide in the one and a half million, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and 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 sort of making a decision to spend money on windows and the playground and.
Yeah.
You know, even a reference to the middle schoolers' presentations, which have been so wonderful item.
Right, and.
For a link.
Could could link to our facilities report. And could link to, there was to the, it was, I think, in June that the operations, at the time, finance or operations committee. Proposed that one point five, um, anyway, just could reference whenever the, that.
Yeah.
We can sort of make that.
That presentation. Yeah, I I like, I think that's helpful, I I appreciate you raising it because. I think the more that we can do to connect dots for people, the better for us, and. That is also something I'm hoping that board members will do when we're out in the community over these next two weeks is say. When you say, do you, what questions do you have for us and somebody.
Yeah.
Might have questions about why would you spend money on windows or a playground or whatever.
Might have questions about why would you spend money on windows or a playground or whatever.
More I look at it, the easier it comes out of my mouth.
Yeah, so, yeah, great.
Be curious about, you know, we're starting from the proposition of like a level services budget. But I think some discussion about, you know, how we've looked for efficiencies and whether there's anything that we can find without. Causing undue anxiety or.
Or impacting student.
Impacting student outcome, yeah, exactly, like is, are there any, you know, things like what Mike's doing with managing cash, right? That we're doing something more efficiently to generate revenue there. Is there anything that you guys can see that we're doing so that when we're talking to the community, we can say, you know? We're not just saying level services, but we're challenging the administration to see where there are efficiencies and that's what they came back with.
Casey, same, any requests for information?
Which is, I was just gonna put you two on the spot too, because Casey, this isn't your first go around budget, but I think your second, right?
This is my first first budget.
With the endless.
Okay, that's right.
That's, it hasn't hurt, so I'm always like, what can we do better to explain this very complicated process to people who are just looking at it?
Um, the only thing I find kind of confusing.
Only one.
This is a broad high school student.
From the slideshow is the budget at a glance.
Uh huh.
Which is uh slide twenty five, I think. Um, and it's just the headings, because it says FY FY twenty six. And then proposed FY twenty seven, and it just says dollar, dollar sign, then percent, percent makes sense.
Oh.
But I think it's kind of confusing, just have the dollar sign there and be like, here's money.
Delta.
Yeah.
What does, is this the increase, what does that mean in comparison to the proposed budget? It's just kind of confusing.
And that will be even more important to have clarity on when we have the more fleshed out with one of these charts.
With like a, with like a V with a dollar, which kind of relates to like a variance to the prior year, would that be more helpful? Because the purpose is trying to show the twenty seven proposed budget you're looking at. And comparing it to the prior year budget of twenty six, so maybe a V dollar, now V percentage.
Or difference, I mean, just use the word difference.
Oh, difference.
Yeah. Is it clear, Sam, that FY twenty six is the year we're in right now?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And then we're getting there, we're getting there.
Thanks, Sam, that's helpful.
I was just gonna ask for sort of, and I think you've pretty much done this, but like the elevator speech version of this, right? Because I don't think a lot of people are gonna read through this, but there's definitely some like pieces you can pick that I think are. If I'm like, if I've got thirty seconds to think about whether I'm gonna vote yes on this budget or not, it's like, okay, there was no new um. You know, it's basically level funded and going up. Simply based on existing expenses, there was no like additional, I don't know, I'm not making sense because it's after eight, but. And I haven't even, but right, like just sort of like a. Especially in the context, I think that was a really good question about the property tax letter, right? It's like, are the spending that the district is like choosing to spend is going up by about three percent based on just existing factors? We're not adding positions or buildings or any like, I I just think it's just.
We will write an elevator.
Like a very like um bulleted slide, like the highlights of, you know, what's changed. Um, because I don't, I don't think ninety percent of folks, maybe more, would know what the yield is or what.
Oh, certainly.
Right, like those kind of things are just kind of lost, but just to sort of say in general, you know. This budget reflects, you know, like the. The board, the administration have um, you know, worked hard to ensure that the budget went up by, um you know, a minimal amount. Based on existing, I don't know, existing expenses, yeah, okay, good, okay.
Level programming, no FTE increase, like just.
Because I think that's just helpful, because again, when you hear the headlines about school spending going up, blah blah blah, it implies that there are decisions being made to add expenses. And that's not.
Absolutely not here. Well, board members, oh yeah, great.
I think, I think the two things that I came away wanting some more information on, it doesn't necessarily impact the the budget projections, but. Um, for the, I know you did some great calculations to give us some better numbers on revenues, but I'm curious if we saw that between actuals and. Like early budget predictions in past years, so like. I I fully believe that they are actual increases that we're gonna see in the revenues, but like playing that out, looking at the past data. Um, and then just for me personally, I feel like I need to understand the fund balance a little bit more. I know, Tim, you were talking about like some stepwise increases, and I didn't necessarily realize that, and so. I just need some direction on where to to find that information to understand it.
Um, and as always, board members can email Libby and me with other requests as to important information or. Pieces of the presentation as they come to you in your sleep, if you'd like. Um, or, you know, anytime over the next week and a half or so, as Libby's working on developing the next one with Mike and the rest of the team. We did set um aside some time for a second public comment in case there were um. Things that members of the public wanted to share after looking at this first glance at a budget. I, again, don't see any members of the public in the room, but I just wanted to see if there's anybody online who has questions or comments after seeing this.
Don't see hands, hands raised.
Okay.
Yeah, can I just say, again, I really think that we've gotten really good information in these budget presentations. I think considering the topic and considering the factors, I feel like. Anna and you and Mike and everybody who like put effort into this presentation. Like, it's, it's great, like, it's really helpful and really useful, and um I just really appreciate, because I know a lot of work goes into translating these things. To something we can digest, and thank you.
Better and better at it, I think.
Definitely, sure, definitely. And if folks who are watching have questions and don't feel like you want to ask in the moment, you can always email us, schoolboard@mpsvt.org. That gets to all of us and Libby, so we're happy to answer questions over email as well, um or just stop us on the street, as someone did with me today. Um, great, so I think we're gonna move on then to policy monitoring. We have just one um policy that we're doing a monitoring report for. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here and following along our fascinating questions and conversation. Um, the policy monitoring, uh, the policy that we are monitoring tonight is B seven tobacco prohibition. Um, do you have a motion to approve the monitoring report?
Move to approve the tobacco monitoring report.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I am going to, I just joined Zoom so that I could be made a panelist or whatever, so I can share my screen. You can do that, Libby, I also think I successfully did it without creating an echo in the room. Now, you should be a panelist, yes, and I have, right. All right, and I just wanted to share my screen so that we can take a look at the board. Um, community engagement options um that are available over the coming couple of weeks. Um, and we'd really love to have full board participation, having uh folks show up at one or two of these. I don't think it's absolutely critical for us to be at every single one of the things on this, on this list, but we would like to inform the community, hey. The board's gonna be out at different community um spaces over the next couple of weeks as we are. Developing in the very early stages of developing the budget, and this is a great chance to offer your insights or and your thoughts. Um, and ask questions, so um we have. Um, tomorrow night, there's the second grade art and music show at UBS. Um, we don't have anybody signed up for that yet, but that's a great opportunity to catch um a good group of caregivers. Casey's gonna be at the Roxbury Free Library on Saturday, and then we also have the Montpelier Farmers Market. On Saturday, Scott and I are signed up for the second shift, which is the later one. Um, uh, I chose that one because my kiddo has a basketball game. Um, earlier in the day, and I would like to go to that, so if anybody can take the early, the earlier slot. I think the farmers market would be a great place to engage with lots of folks in the community. Um, we've secured a spot at the Calhoun Hubbard Library on next Wednesday evening in their, one of some of their later hours. To try to catch some of the after work crowd that's walking, that's coming through the library. And then um anybody who's going to the play and wanted to, wants to. Um, show up a little early and be here to chat with folks as they're arriving, and then chat with folks during intermission. Um, I think that's a great time to met to um connect with people from all over the community. Um, because not, you know, we don't just have students and caregivers coming to the place, because they're so great. We've got people from all over coming to those. Um, so those are the opportunities we wanted to give. Board members a minute to check your schedules, new calendars, and see if there's anything you'd be able to sign up for.
Is that a shared document that you?
Yep.
You sent us.
It is a shared document, Brett sent it around after the last board meeting, so a couple of weeks ago.
Really quickly, I, we have, um, I don't know, swag's not the right word, but we have um uh. Like a banner or something like that, right? But so I guess at least for this, yeah, where where is that normally stored? And if if we need to grab it, that kind of thing.
It's in the trunk of my car right now.
Okay.
There was somebody I can hand it off to who's gonna be at one of these events.
Hearing about the art and music show tomorrow, this is the same time as practice, and I will be. Dropping off at six and picking up at seven, and in between, I don't know if that is actually.
Oh, right.
Because everybody's watching.
Right.
And that's, it doesn't really work.
Yeah.
Way, but I'm sort of. I'm worried.
Yeah, I think, uh, Scott, we will. I think we'll just do a lot of coordinating amongst each other to pass, hand that off to folks. Um, and we'll also be asking, um, Libby and Anna can translate some of the slides that we had. From this budget presentation into visual aids, so that we have something to share with people when we are. At these events, and we're not just talking in abstracts, but we can say, here's what we know so far. Um, so, we'll have all of that. And we will also have brochures to hand out that are information for anybody who's interested in serving on the school board.
There are new ones.
We've new ones.
Yeah, we have new ones, we're gonna have Monday.
Oh, that's great, so we'll have some of those as well, and this is all, these are also great opportunities to talk with folks about about that. All right, this is looking pretty good, we'll just keep. Plug it away, add it.
Also, maybe potentially reviewing our successes.
What do you mean?
Well, next time we meet, somebody will talk about how. Successful they were in community connectivity.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Okay, I think that is everything. Thanks, everybody, for the signups. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move readjourn.
Tim, Tim moved by raising his hand.
Oh, second, Jill seconds, any discussion?
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, everybody.